So it looks like we're still waiting for two commissioners, Neil, Commissioner Neil and also Rodriguez?
Have we heard if Commissioner Rodriguez is attending this evening?
I haven't received any phone calls from him either way. He did pick up his packet, so. Chair Lemus, if you wanted to start the meeting, we can let you know when he's joined us.
Okay, okay, so I want to call to order the meeting of the Catani Planning Commission for March 7th. Can we go ahead and start with the roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Moore?
Yes, here.
Commissioner Murphy?
Here.
Vice Chair Hancock?
Here.
Chair Lemus?
Yes.
And I am showing Commissioner Rodriguez is absent at this time.
Okay, thank you. So the next item was, we have the approval of the minutes. So the first one is the regular meeting of June 21st, 2021. Do you have a motion? Do we want to approve them one by one or all together?
Chair Lemus, we don't have a quorum for this. With Jonathan not here.
Okay, so there's four of us.
But two were absent.
And oh, two were absent on that day, I see.
I think couldn't you do June 21st as only I was absent there, but you've got three people?
Brittany was absent.
Brittany and Neil, let me see the other ones. And then Lisa, you and I were absent for the 7th.
Really, we need Jonathan there for these two minutes to be approved.
Okay, okay, so then we'll come back to that, to this toward the end if Jonathan is able to attend. So we're going to move to number, section D. Changes to the agenda, is there any changes to the agenda? Okay, none, no changes to the agenda? So is there any?
Noah, you're muted.
Sorry, there's no changes to the agenda.
Okay, thank you. What about oral written communications we've received?
All written communications were attached to the, each of the items.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll go ahead and get started with the first item, the discussion is urban agriculture ordinance.
This item is being handled by our new associate planner, Autumn Buss.
Thank you, Noah. Good evening, Chair Lemus and members of the commission. I'm happy to be here, I'm joined the city in January as a planner and really excited to be bringing you this item tonight. So let me have the next slide, please, Carrie. So we have before you with this item, a consideration of a resolution recommending that the city council adopt an ordinance amending the zoning code to facilitate urban agriculture and local food production. And this item amends, would amend several sections of the codes you probably saw from the thickness of the agenda packet related to this item. And it addresses several aspects of urban agriculture, including commercial crop production, produce stands, chicken keeping and community gardens. We also are including the potential rezoning of the Veranda Faletti Ranch so that that property can continue to be used as a demonstration farm. There are a number of smaller and bigger changes proposed in this item, I'm just going to go over the highlights, but all of the details are in the staff report and of course we'll have time for questions afterwards. Next slide, please. So a little background on this, on this item. Catani's general plan includes a number of goals, actually quite a list of goals to promote local food production and increase access to food, to healthy food. I want, those are enumerated in the staff report, I just want to list, kind of go over the three that I think are kind of the most compelling to me anyway. I want, those are enumerated in the staff report, I just want to list, kind of go over the three that I think are kind of the, the most compelling to me anyway. The first is supporting development of appropriate agriculture in residential and open space zones. Second is strengthening local food systems, including community gardens and community-supported agriculture, which I'm going to refer to both by that long name and by CSA as its initials. And just briefly, you may be familiar with what CSA it means, but it's essentially membership stakes in a farm where members pay in advance to receive produce allotments on some kind of a regular basis. And it's usually a key income opportunity that's reliable for a small farm, so it can be really important. And then the third important goal that I want to call out is diversification of local economic activities. So unfortunately, the zoning code does include a number of restrictions on these, on activities related to urban ag that presents some real challenges to implementation of the general plan. And for that reason, the city council directed staff last fall to take a look at the situation and make some recommendations to recommend changes to the code. And so that's why we are here tonight. Next slide, please. So the first major area of change that, that's proposed in this ordinance is related to commercial crop production. And what's proposed is to allow crop production as a land use by right, so without permits, in the RR, RVL, OSR and OSC zoning districts. And you can see on the slide what those alphabets, what that alphabet soup is spelled out. So those are our lowest density residential districts and our two open space and parks districts. Currently, crop production is allowed, commercial crop production is allowed, but just in the rural residential or RR district and it requires a use permit. One of the, so one of the major considerations in applying the crop production land use here is that we're targeting the, the areas of the city where the properties are larger, the development pattern is more rural in nature. There are, the property sizes are more likely to be able to accommodate an agricultural operation. And so that's, that's really where we've ended up with these particular zones. At the same time, we're targeting not the commercial and industrial properties. We wanted to maintain the land uses in those zones for those commercial and industrial types of uses that are also a benefit to the community. We're also looking through, you know, looking at consistency between the RR and the RVL zones. And we'll go to the next slide, please, we'll take a look at our zoning now. And so the, the rural residential and residential very low, RVL zones are primarily in the west and the south of the city. And as you look at this map, you can see those light green, kind of mint colored properties are the RR zones, okay, rural residential. The tan colors more in the south of the city is our RVL. And you'll see that the property sizes among those two zones can be somewhat consistent, right? So they're actually have, even though they're differently zoned districts, the property sizes are somewhat commensurate from one zone to the other. None of these properties are particularly big. The largest, there's only a handful, the largest ones that are even over two acres. So we're really talking about small scale agriculture. The largest properties, and there's really just a handful of them, are, are between five and 10 acres. Okay, next slide. So in considering crop production as a, as a land use here, and again, this is for business purposes, commercial, we are proposing some standards for operation in order to make sure that, you know, these small urban farms can be good neighbors. That includes some hours of activity limitations and setbacks, you know, to, to maintain a certain buffer around the edges of, of the area that would be used in crop production. And those setbacks mirror the primary structure setbacks that you find in the RR and RVL zones. As I mentioned earlier, we're also proposing that community-supported agriculture, CSA, be allowed to, as an accessory activity with, with the crop production land use in order to support better viability of these, these small farms. And we heard from farmers that the greenhouse sizes that there were, that were allowed in the RVL zone in particular were really not suitable for a commercial production use, you know, for growing little, little plant starts to go out into the field. And right now, as it stands, you have a greenhouse of up to 400 square feet per dwelling unit in RVL, but at a larger allotment, the smaller of 1,000 square feet or 5% of lot size in the RR zone. So we've kind of taken the best of both, put them together so that both zones are offering this kind of flexible option of 400 square feet or the smaller of 1,000 square feet or 5% of lot size so that the farmers can actually do what they need to do onsite. Okay, next slide. So once, once farmers grow their produce, they need to sell it. And, and we're assuming that, you know, that these farm operations will also be selling their produce, you know, to, you know, to little markets perhaps or to restaurants. We also would like to allow them to be able to sell their produce onsite in addition to the CSA model. So the produce stand land use is approved, or sorry, proposed in these same zones, RR, RVL, OSR and OSC. Right now, you can have a produce stands in the RR zone, but it requires a use, a full use permit. So we're, we're suggesting a minor use permit to kind of bring that down just a little bit, that, that burden, that administrative burden. So this is accessory to an agricultural operation that's already onsite. They will be allowed to operate year-round, again with limits on, on business hours, activity hours. We have a parking standard proposed. And really what we're trying to do here is reduce the burden to allow produce stands, but with a minor use permit so that there's still the opportunity for the city to review what's proposed in this produce stand and review for impacts on the neighborhood. Okay, next slide. Okay, chicken keeping. So right now, you may know that a property can have up to 20 chickens in Katari, which is, which is pretty liberal for, for this area. The, the commercial chicken keeping is not allowed. So keeping chickens for any sort of sales, eggs is not, not really allowed. So what we're proposing is to, to allow that commercial chicken keeping in these same four zones that we've been talking about and to increase the limit on the number of chickens to really increase the viability of a commercial egg operation. So that if someone has a property that is a little bit bigger, that they can go to the standard of 12 hens per acre. We really are talking about hens, roosters are allowed in the RR and the OSC zones currently. We're not proposing to expand that to any of the resident, other residential zones. We really are just talking about adding to the OSR zone because that relates to Faletti Ranch where there are currently roosters. You know, I'll talk about Faletti Ranch some more later. So again, egg production, egg sales is a way for someone who's operating a small agricultural operation on their property to just have a little bit more financial viability, more financial options. And we are again, targeting really those larger properties to help reduce the neighborhood impact of, you know, this, this kind of chicken keeping. Okay, next slide. So this is the one change, community gardens is the one area of change that really impacts more than those, those four zoning districts I've been talking about. So we're proposing to allow community gardens by right in all zoning districts in, in the city. And the goal in doing that is to really bring access to land for food production into the hands of more residents who might live on really small properties or live in apartments. We are also proposing to change the definition of community garden a little bit to look a little broader. Right now, community garden is defined in our code as just a sort of a collection of individuals. We want to recognize that nonprofits, educational institutions, other kinds of charitable organizations, churches often operate gardens as well. So we're going to extend the definition a little bit. And we're also looking at sustainability for community gardens and allowing them to raise funds to purchase the things that they need to buy and to raise funds for charitable purposes as well. So we're, want to add the provision for seasonal produce stands with some hours restrictions, as you can see there, and also a CSA option. So this would be by right too. Currently, community gardens are allowed in some districts, residential districts, but they require a minor use permit. So where the proposed change is also includes changing to by right without a permit. Okay, next slide. Okay, Veranda Faletti Ranch. So this item is, it also includes proposing a new zoning for the Faletti Ranch property. It's currently zoned a neighborhood low density, which is a residential zone. We're proposing to change that to open space recreation, OSR. And the goal is to allow the, the ranch to continue to operate as a demonstration farm, an education center and a cultural resource for the city. As it stands right now with the zoning of, and the neighborhood low density zoning, farming is actually not allowed, neither are farm animals or commercial chicken keeping. Okay, next slide. So more on the, on the ranch. So as you, you most likely know, there is a conservation easement on the property, which, which really precludes residential development on the site. It allows residential use of the existing farmhouse on the site, but really restricts use otherwise to agricultural uses, historic use, educational and recreational uses. So to change the zoning to OSR really allows the city to pursue that, the terms of that conservation easement as well as to pursue some of the larger community goals that are associated with the ranch and to promote urban agriculture as the, the ranch is going to be. Not just an opportunity to produce food, but an opportunity to educate the community about backyard food gardening, sustainable farming practices and animal keeping. Some of the changes that are proposed that relate to the ranch in this, in this item would allow some uses that, in addition to being uses the community has identified as desirable, are also some uses that will help promote long-term sustainability of the, the operation at the farm to generate some income to continue operating. And that, that would include a produce stand at the site, community-supported agriculture as an option, a commercial nursery, craft product manufacturing, an onsite daycare, just some different options to, to keep that, that site going into the future. Okay, next slide. So, right now, most of the cities in the county and the county itself do allow crop production in their lowest density residential zones. And they allow some, many of them allow some amount of chicken keeping, right? So to make some of these changes really would put Katari more on a par with local cities in the county. What would be a little more cutting edge about it, about these changes and kind of put Katari a little bit more on the proactive side related to urban agriculture is really calling out crop production as a commercial use, allowing some of these low-impact business operations that are associated with the crop production, reducing the, the administrative burden of a, of the approval burden to a minor use permit for produce stands, really addressing community-supported agriculture, which is not really addressed in most of the cities, other cities' codes in the area, allowing commercial egg production and community gardens in all zones by right, which would be definitely something, I think, kind of special for, for Katari compared to the other cities in the area. Okay, next slide, please. So the, the city and the staff have been approached by some of our local and statewide urban agriculture organizations and some local residents asking for regulatory changes related to agriculture, to urban agriculture. And that is include, that includes the commercial crop production by right in the RVL zone, commercial chicken keeping in some zones, increased numbers of hens on larger properties, allowing produce stands in the RVL zone, allowing CSAs as accessory to crop production and increasing the maximum greenhouse size in the RVL. And so all, all of those changes are actually included in this ordinance. So those have been, have been promoted and we are carrying them forward in this item. Next slide, please. The, so the urban agriculture advocacy community has asked for some additional changes as well. And, and really that breaks down to allowing commercial crop production, chicken keeping and produce stands all as by right without a permit in all zoning districts in the city and significantly increasing the number of hens allowed beyond that 12 per acre that, that staff is proposing. So the proposal that the staff has put together really continues to, to focus on those lowest density residential districts and the open space districts for crop production rather than all zones within the city. Because that's where we find the larger properties and we want to maintain the integrity of the commercial and industrial properties for those uses specifically. Produce stands really mirrors what's proposed for crop production and we would like to maintain the minor use permit provision in order to allow city review to reduce neighborhood impact. And pretty much the same with the commercial chicken keeping, we really, rather than allowing that throughout the city, we're focusing on the lower density, larger property in the zones where produce stands would be allowed so that egg sales can actually be, be accomplished. Okay, next slide. Okay, with that, we have our recommendation. The community development department recommends that the planning commission conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution recommending that the city council amends the land use code to facilitate urban agriculture and local food production consistent with general plan goals. Next slide. Okay, with that, I'm available for your questions.
Thank you so much, Autumn, and welcome to, to the City of Katari, thank you so much. So we're going to start with some questions from the commissioners and then we'll go to the public and then we'll come back. Is that, is that the correct order, staff? So I'll start with Commissioner Moore, she has her hand raised.
Yes, I, I have quite a few questions, actually. Can you actually go back on the slides? Well, right off the bat, we have a map and that was on the zones, it was included in our packet. And I'm just curious why it wasn't included the whole city in that? Where we could see some of the zones that are in, basically up on Cypress and areas of the city?
So the, this map that was in the.
The map that was in our, the map that was included in our packet did not show all this.
Really?
Well, at least my map did not show all of it.
Okay, well, I meant it to, I apologize for that.
Yeah.
It should have been the same map as the one that's in the presentation.
Yeah, I, I have a map that Daisy's just showing, it cuts off right at Old Redmond Highway.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at that, Commissioner Moore, and I believe that must have been a formatting error when we printed the packet from the agenda management software. For some reason, I must have not provided the full graphic, our apologies.
Yeah, it's just hard for me to really get a whole read of the whole city of what you're talking about when I'm just basically looking at half of that. No worries, I mean, I'm familiar with the whole city as it is. And I do have a question about the rural residential on Benson and Park, that that would be the same as out on Cypress and those properties out there? Would that be included? Those are rural residential properties.
Yes, so yes, this, the proposal addresses each, every property that's within the RR and RVL zones, so.
So those were residential properties, but L-section and McGinnis and residential properties right in the middle of town. So just a question on that, I, I have an issue with putting farm stands right on. And I don't know how many farm stands we're talking about because it says just farm stands are now across the board, like a given. And I don't know how many farm stands we're talking about because it says just farm stands are now across the board um like a given. So it's just kind of interesting that anyways, I mean, we have a rural residential right in town, right in the middle basically of town. So I don't know if that's been addressed by the planning staff. Um, the other one I have is the you can go from seven o'clock in the morning till seven o'clock at night for community gardens. Um, and for on the weekends, nine o'clock in the morning till five in the evening. And you can have a farm stand during that time. So um I have questions on that, being that I have a community garden right next to me. And I probably wouldn't appreciate having somebody there at seven o'clock at night selling vegetables. It's a great idea, but you're actually in a neighborhood where there's other activities and people wanna come home from work and not have everybody in their neighborhood there. Um, I just maybe adjustment of those times. I think it's a long period of time from seven to seven. Um, the other one you said you mentioned with the Falletti Ranch, that they could have a daycare there. So I'm just curious who would run a daycare? Would it be a city-sponsored daycare? Would it be a daycare that was um, you know, a commercial daycare?
Sorry, I'm still not sure about that.
Sorry. I have I have a, so there's three daycares right around the corner from there. So I, that's what I'm curious about too, is that there was a daycare mentioned. Another thing I have on that is look at my notes here. I apologize, I have everything highlighted. Um, so I'm gonna go back to farm stands are allowed. And so I I'd just like to know how many farm stands and if we have that just as a permitted use. How, what would that look like for every property that wanted to do some kind of of agriculture? Um, and if so, like you said, they're permitted till seven o'clock at night. Um, I probably have other questions, but uh those are mine for now.
Okay. Is it okay if I, sorry, you guys will have to refresh me on the protocol here. Is it okay if I address Commissioner Moore's questions now?
Sure.
We don't go, okay, great. Um, so great questions. Uh so again, the the farm stand is 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 with a minor use permit unlike the crop production. So with the crop production, the farming, that would be by right. So they wouldn't need to come to us for a permit. With the with produce stands, the farm stands, definitely, we are proposing that a permit needs to be issued so that we have the opportunity to review, you know, what's it gonna look like, where's it gonna be, where's the, what's the traffic impact going to be? You know, so that we can really make minimize the impact on the neighborhood. It is possible that we would have multiple properties that could be adjacent to each other, deciding that you know, they wanna farm their properties and that they want to have a produce stand. It is conceivable that there could be multiple applications for produce uh stands, you know, on several properties in in close proximity. We don't actually anticipate that that will happen, but it is possible. And we would be, you know, we would be reviewing each one. Um, and I'm sorry, I'm familiar those, the properties you mentioned.
So Autumn, I can, I can speak to a couple of those things too. So uh just a reminder to the minor use permit also involves a full public hearing, notification to all the neighbors, all those things. And one of the things that I thought um Associate Planner uh Bus really did a good job of is anticipating this need for maybe adjacent properties. And so the current farm stand regulations actually allow you to sell uh produce produced on your neighboring property. So the goal of that was to allow like farms who are in close proximity to kind of consolidate their operations and all uh join in and essentially have one operation, one farm stand where multiple properties could sell from. So that way, the goal was to minimize that traffic issue. However, you are correct, people could request that. But that's why we're proposing to keep the public hearing use permit process where we still engage everyone, we still let everyone know. Um, it's a reduced fee, so the idea was to try to make it a little bit more approachable for someone uh who was farming. But you are absolutely correct, that could happen. And then staff would be tasked with looking at the proximity of other farm stands, notifying the neighbors, hearing their concerns, and trying to address them in making the decision. Uh and those properties on Benson, they are uh RBL, uh so they are included in some of this. Uh and I apologize for the map uh formatting error, that was very unfortunate. Uh so some of these changes would affect those RBL properties uh kind of around Helen Putnam Park, that's correct. So Autumn, if you're familiar with that location, just uh east of Helen Putnam Park and the the Veterans um Community Center.
Yeah, I see that.
And then Commissioner Moore, we did model some of the hours after the construction hours that are allowed. Uh but there were some uh minor flexibility added just to anticipate people needing to maybe go do some planting early or or deal with some things at certain hours of the day based on the needs of farming.
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna add a couple of more uh things there. Um, one of our hopes, just looking, setting back to uh what um what was just mentioned related to having maybe aggregation of of produce from maybe multiple sites at a single farm stand in a neighborhood. We're also really hoping that the Falletti Ranch property will also serve that purpose, that it has a farm stand there, that they may be able to sell produce that is produced within Katati on other lo- at other locations where crop production is allowed. But maybe the owners or the neighbors are not too enthusiastic about the idea of actually having a farm stand there that they can take their produce down to uh to Falletti Ranch. That's, you know, that's, that's one of the hopes, is that they will serve that function there as well. Uh with the the community gardens, um the the allowed operation of mechanical equipment and sort of noise, really, you know, noisy equipment onsite is set at seven to seven weekdays, nine to five on on weekends and holidays. If they operate a produce stand or a CSA onsite, the hours are nine AM to seven PM. So it's starting a little bit later, but it is still going to that seven PM. So and the the hours he- here that are proposed are the kind of thing that we can make little adjustments to tonight if the other commissioners agree that, you know, that that's something that maybe needs to be adjusted.
Yeah.
You asked about
Autumn, I'm sorry, I forgot to address the childcare at Falletti. So the City Council recently approved uh expanded operational plan with Farmster and they brought in a daycare provider uh to kind of supplement that uh operation. And so the City Council has approved that, and so this is just um actually, this change would allow daycare operations on city park properties, uh similar to some of the things that are actually already occurring. But it does not, there is no intention that the city would operate that. That would always be third-party operators using city-owned property. Sorry, or park-designated properties.
Thank you. Thank you. Now I see Commissioner Hancock has his hand up. Commissioner Hancock, go ahead.
Yes, hi, thanks. Yeah, I've also got a set of questions. I'd like to just be upfront though that I have said attended a community association of family farmers that was held in Katati. Um, the, I guess, when all this started, um on one of the lands that was being looked at. And it was very educational. So um just to reemphasize there, you know, there's a lot of food security issues around farming, about growing it. Um, there's a lot of health benefits as well for people being involved in their own growing in some sort. So so the question, the first question I've got, um, you know, given that Katati plots are very small, I mean, this is largely, I perceive it largely as a educational exercise. And and again, something that the Community Association of Family Farmers sort of stressed is is that people often get into agriculture as a way of trying things out in an urban setting. So, you know, I don't see that we really, from the size of the plots, have anything that could be scaled to become a very full commercial facility. So it's really, that's a question. I mean, is that the perception of staff on this?
Well, I I think that's a good question. And, you know, we were in, we we were appealed to uh by uh a property owner who did want to uh operate a farm on her property and was not able to due to the zoning. And her property is about eight acres in size. And uh she felt that it could be a viable farming operation even with a property of that size. And they were not gonna use the whole property either. I think that the area that they had in mind was really just a few acres. And so, you know, since we're, we're, we're not farmers, we, you know, we we're, you know, collecting information from them. Uh, you know, they certainly seemed to think that it was viable. And then we've also had discussions with the Agricultural Ombudsman for the county, um, the UC Cooperative Extension Representative for the local food systems and uh representatives of CAF, uh California Alliance for Family Farmers. And, you know, they really are promoting these, you know, these small-scale urban farms. And they seem to feel that, you know, beginner or no, that, you know, that farmers could make a go of it on some of these smaller-sized properties. And, you know, they really felt that's what they were encouraging us to make these changes.
Oh, and I mean, I I think that's great for them to try and I I, you know, fingers crossed, when you're doing the business development, it's really hard to get things going to begin with. So I'm I'm fully supportive of of the sort of the family farmers being able to make it. But it just, again, I just wanna say from the size of the plots, um and talking to the person who does my um delivery of vegetables from a a a community farm, you know, it certainly seems to me like it's marginal and I I support them. Um, I would say also on the, you know, a part of of the question on this, you know, for anybody who wants to do something, obviously, labor is important. And I have a neighbor who's done some chickens and, you know, the kids just put a little notice outside the gate. Hey, if you actually want something, give us a text. Um, so would that be illegal under the current regime if they're in a um an ML?
That, that's, that is correct, yeah. And we
We're making criminals out of kids just trying to get going at the moment, or at least those aren't criminals. But I mean, this new process will at least help people make contact with farming a few chickens and doing some production.
Uh it it might. Uh right now, as things stand, commercial chicken keeping isn't allowed in Katati at all. So, you know, our our goal in addressing the larger properties is that we can make change happen or change potential on those properties. What happens at a, at a more um informal level within, you know, a neighborhood where we're not attempting to get in and regulate that?
Well, I, and I I realize that, just bringing it up though, the, you know, small farm stands. I know if you walk down Lebec Lane to on Eucalyptus, you just go just outside Katati and there is a farm stand that has people basically, you know, it's an honesty system. You can't afford to have somebody actually out there um on it all the time. So I don't think these are big, big issues that are as far as the farm stands. I I do have some questions about, just technical questions on the map, which I brought up on my screen. I had the low printout as well. And on there, the zoning, it says OSR, Open Space Conservation. Um, and on the, all in the text, there's either OSR or OSC. So do I, I gather we're actually introducing the new OSC?
Uh Commissioner Hancock, I believe there's a, there's a uh text error in the current zoning graphic. Uh the city does have both OSR properties and open space conservation land use designations. However, uh I'm not aware of any properties in the city that are actually designated as open space conservation. We have that zoning district uh available, but I'm not sure that it's been utilized. I'm not aware that it's been utilized on any specific property.
Okay, that was my question. So I'd say it's just a map technicality at the moment um on there. Um, another sort of technicality um on here, we've got two um approvals that we're looking at, number one and number two, um and they, both of them have tables for land use. Um, the second tables are all out of date because they don't represent an update yet. So when we approve number one, I mean, I think this is, I'm really splitting hairs on this, but it's just a question. When we approve number one with these changes to the zoning, it'll automatically flow through to the code and to, because number two, when we approve them, which is a draft ordinance to amend land use code again, hasn't got the same changes and updates. So it just confused, it confused me when I was searching through, as I suddenly came across a set of tables right at the end that were under the Second Planning Commission.
Vice Chair Hancock, I think the first one is for the the Planning Commission and the second one is for the City Council. So after we review it, then it could, it looks like the second, the ordinance, you're talking about the one on page one thirty-eight?
Well, one seventy-one. So there's, it's just really, I'm just making sure we're clear that when we make changes to one ordinance, there's actually two sets of changes, both affecting land use.
And that is correct. There are two uh ordinances before the commission this evening that will affect the current land use tables. And right now, because they have not been acted upon, neither one of them are recognized in the tables provided for the commission's consideration.
Right, okay. I'm just bringing that up to say, to make sure that from a technicality, um it does flow through um for that. Okay, well, thank you very much.
Okay, so I wanna um offer Commissioner Murphy an opportunity to share questions on this item.
Thank you. Um, no, I thought the presentation and information was really thorough. Thank you so much. Um, but just one administrative question. Um, since this affects uh Falletti Ranch, I just wanted to ask if there's any concern um with the location of where I live and proximity to that and me voting on this issue.
Uh, thank you for that que- that. I will look on the distance while we chat and you may, we may break up the vote uh from the um citywide text amendments, no problem on that. But if you're in within five hundred feet of Falletti, then we will ask you to abstain on voting for the map amendment. And I will double-check proximity before we ask for the vote. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Thank you. And so now, yeah, I had a few questions that I was gonna ask. Um, some were already asked. Like, for example, I was also concerned about the hours of operation, um especially for noise and and the existing kind of residents in in those areas. I want to make questions also was about water use and the current drought that we're existing. Is there, you know, we have the community garden um and kind of open it up to to all zones? You know, is that in conflict with kind of any kind of drought policy? I don't know if there is. So that was a question I had about water use. Um, cottage foods, I don't know, that's something that's not a consideration, but it was discussed. I wasn't sure if ca- I just want to confirm that cannabis has a whole separate set of um rules and regulations for that. That's not included in regular cottage foods. Okay. Um, another question I had was on um Farmster, the contractor had, that has been working. Um, do you know if they have, um, because I'm I'm not familiar with Farmster, but I'm familiar with other operations like Land Paths that they run gardens with like um Andy's Park and also Bayer Farm. So I was wondering, hold on a second, I'm getting maybe kind of call, I was getting. So I was wondering, like, you know, what kind of, I haven't really checked their educational or community opportunities that they have. And I'm wondering if they offer also bilingual presentations or or those type of opportunities to kind of provide more of like an equity focus in the community and bring in kind of different communities. Um, that's a question that I had. Um, and then yeah, those are the main questions that I have.
Okay, great. Um, no, do you want to address the the water use and I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let Director House talk about the the drought and water use.
Yeah, uh Chair Lemus, thank you for the questions. Uh I've, you know, I, and through my career, I've I've sat in multiple discussions and kind of presentations on community-supported agriculture and and community agriculture and water conservation. As you can imagine, these these issues always come together. And I mean, the bottom line is using water-produced food is is one of the best things you could do for it. And so although some folks may uh who are using their their city-provided water to grow food on-site rather than a well, they may experiences some, some of the impacts associated with increased water use. You know, they're not reducing their bill by twenty percent, et cetera. If they choose to do that, I think, big picture, uh it's a worthy use uh of their water, given that they can Uh, it's a worthy use uh, of their water, given that they can reduce the amount of trips they're taking to the store. And water will be conserved in other places because they're not buying those, that produce. So I've, this discussion always err on the side of that's the best use of water is to produce food. Uh, and then with regards to the Farmster's operation, I'm not sure what type of equity elements they have in any of their contracting practices. Or any of those things. Um, I'm happy to try to get you some answers, but I'm sure I will not be able to provide you any this evening.
Yeah, I checked on their online website and the, the website wasn't active, but they had a Facebook that looks like it hadn't been active since last summer. So I wasn't able to really get any current information on Farmster. I was curious on that. But thank you.
And with, there is the, um, we have a current work plan with Farmster. Uh, the work plan needs to be approved by the Ag and Open Space District. Uh, you know, so they have, they have approved a work plan from, that is dated July of last year, July. It, it's kind of buried in there. It's at um, page one twenty-three in the packet. Uh, so that, so the way it works is Farmster gives us the work plan. We share the work plan with Ag and Open Space. The, they need to sign off on it. Um, and I think, I think it's very general. I didn't see anything related to, to equity and inclusion issues in, in the work plan. Um, you know, I guess my view would be that it is a contract with, it, it primarily with the city. It's a license agreement with the city and um, we can provide, you know, we should be instrumental in developing the work plan with Farmster. And if that is a piece that's missing that we would like to see included, it will be discussed and, you know, it can be discussed in the next work plan development. Uh, which I think will probably be coming up. I'm not sure when it comes up exactly. Um, I think it's actually maybe an annual work plan. I may be mistaken about that, so we'll have to check back with you on what the, what the timeline is for.
Okay, because if so, that would be good to include that element in the, in the plan. Thank you so much. And um, so now at this point, we'll go to see if there's any public comment on this uh, item. So I assume there's no public comment on this item? So.
Uh, Chair Lemus, I do see the uh, two attendees with hands raised.
Okay, so does staff, um, does staff allow them to speak, like, open up their mic or do I?
Yeah, no, I believe it's um, either Carrie or Lauren.
Yeah, we'll get that open for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen McGrath, go ahead.
Hi, thank you so much for that great presentation. Let me, sorry, let me just see if I can get my, should I not have my video on, on this?
Um. Carrie, sorry, yeah, just so you know, attendees cannot have a video.
Oh, okay. Um, so I am with UC Cooperative Extension. I'm the new agricultural ombuds person. So I'm your ombuds buddy, um, but they won't let me put that on business card. And so I just want to reiterate that, um, thank you so much for that great presentation. And that the UC has done extensive research on the benefits of urban agriculture. Uh, we are really struggling right now with, you know, getting access to land. And so that, of course, is important, community development, education and youth development opportunities. Of course, the food access and security. Um, and then, you know, it's, it's been shown to be increased fruit and vegetable consumption and food and health literacy. And then, of course, with, you know, job creation, training and business incubation. And of course, we're always looking for market expansion for farmers. Thank you.
Wendy Kreppnik, go ahead.
Yeah, hi, thank you. Um, my name is Wendy Kreppnik and I um, serve as the vice president of our local chapter. Of Community Alliance with Family Farmers. And I also have a little kind of small farm um, in between, on the urban fringe, in between Santa Rosa and Sebastopol. In the Santa Rosa Plain, on county land that zone diverse agriculture, and I do sell primarily through a farm stand. Um, I've been involved with agriculture my adult, entire adult life, about forty-six years or so, so dating myself. Um, and, and I also um, do appreciate that Katati is, you know, attempting to move forward. With supporting um, urban agriculture. Um, I am speaking um, on behalf of a coalition of groups that brought this to the city council's attention actually last summer. When we found out um, that there was this prohibition against commercial food production in the city. In spite of the fact that the Katati general plan supports it. So um, there's a few uh, comments that I'd like to make this evening. And we will be following up with some written comment um, as well. Um, we do want to advocate, you know, even a pre, here. Uh, we do want to advocate for extending um, the commercial crop production to all zones. And, you know, in addition to the, you know, um, potential commercial, you know, income generating capacity. As um, our ag buds person just mentioned, really increasing food security and food access. It's a very important reason to do this. Um, I don't, and regarding size, I do not see size as a limitation at all. Um, some of you may remember the news a number of years ago in Pasadena, where this micro farm on a tenth of an acre. Was um, producing massive quantities of food and um, bringing in like two hundred thousand dollars a year. It seems incredible, but I saw the video of what they're doing. Really farm viability, there are so many different factors that go into farm viability. A lot of it's, you know, it's labor, it's management, it's what you're attempting to do, it's efficiency. So we can't decide, you know, what's going to be viable and what isn't. I think we need to be supporting the potential for people to learn how to grow food, to feed their neighbors. And to um, you know, also have some income. Uh, on a farm stands, a farm stand can be as simple as a card table and an umbrella in somebody's front yard. And if a senior or a teenager, you know, wants to bring a little income and share their bounty. You know, maybe a fruit tree that produces way more than they can eat and um, share that with their neighbors. I absolutely think those kinds of things should be supported. So um. Uh, and, and I'm also, you know, a little bit concerned about the reason why there's, people worry about having farming. You know, commercial production, people selling food in all zones. When there are already other commercial enterprises that happen in residential neighborhoods. For example, Airbnbs and what are they called? The um, you know, uh, home occupations where people run a little business out of their home. So um, you know, those kinds of commercial businesses are happening in residential neighborhoods already. And food production seems like a pretty um, benign um, use. Um, we feel that the produce stand should be around, allowed by right. However, if someone is selling processed foods or produce that's from a, and maybe an adjacent site makes sense. But from someplace else, I do think that that should have a minor use permit so that it can be regulated. Um, I see I've got, well, I've got another minute. Good. Um.
Actually, I think you're over a minute. You, you've done it over. That's okay. Thank you so much.
We do have other comments and like I said, we will submit those but in writing.
Thank you so much. Okay, so no other commenters. So now I want to bring it back to the commission and see if any, if there's any further discussion or. Uh, before we go on to the resolution, um, any further discussion on this item? Uh, Commissioner Murphy?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, and um, I, I attended um, an informational meeting held by the city council as a resident. Uh, I, I believe it was a couple of months ago and it was in regard to Fletti Ranch. And some questions came up about um, maybe what's going on there and some of the educational opportunities. And um, I just wanted to mention that they discussed that in more detail. And uh, the uh, lead for Sandy Lom School was on and, and she talked a lot about some of the opportunities Sandy Lom is providing. Our son has been a part of that, um, since he goes to one of the preschools here. He's actually attended multiple field trips now. And my understanding is that they're doing that with a number of schools. Um, but we would have to clarify, but that is my understanding. And they're um, providing agricultural education um, to the kids so that they can learn about where food comes from. Uh, animals, decomposers was something they recently learned. Um, so just really wonderful hands-on opportunities there, which is very exciting for us um, as a local resident. And then I believe through some of the uh, information I've seen um, on social media from them. They're also doing other types of classes for community, for the community, um, not just for children, but for adults as well. So um, since that question came up, I wanted to at least share what I, what I knew and had heard as a nearby resident.
Thank you. And let's go to Vice Chair Hancock.
Yes, hi. Um, again, I want to come back to uh, what Wendy did and she did this presentation that I think everybody was invited to. Um, um, and it had a number of supervisors at this presentation and stuff. Um, about the value of urban agriculture. And I, and I think the perspective to keep in mind is just that it's if somebody wants to do it, that they should be able to do it. I have just under half an acre in um, the neighborhood low density that I'm in. And certainly there was a tenant of mine who said, well, can I do some farming out here and do some stuff? And I didn't like the idea, but we're in a street that could actually do some of that if we want. So I'm certainly supportive of the idea of extending to NL and NM. Um, the neighborhood low density and the neighborhood median density. Just on the basis that if somebody wants to do it, it's not going to be their primary motive for doing anything. But it's just, we won't make them non-conforming if they decide to do it. So, you know, I think that side is, is very educational for people to do it. A, and again, for the, for people who might do a stand, I just don't see that it's going to be a big issue. Um, I, I think we're just getting so complicated about this. Um, so I'm certainly supportive of um, stands. And, you know, if it really became an issue, I think it could be looked at later on. But we're, we're just not, we just don't have that sort of type of business going within the city that a lot of people, I think, are gonna look at doing it. So that's my sort of comment on there really. Let's extend the, the zones to NL and MM. The sort of neighborhood low density and the neighborhood um, medium density. Um. Thank you.
Thank you. And let's go to Commissioner Mur.
So I, I, I just want to comment on this is that I think it's our job to really look at. What is that major impact of something that can go on? Even if we think it's just going to be low impact right now. What we see for the future, if, if, if we have multiple farm stands on a road such as Benson or Park. And what the traffic's going to be in the future. So I, I guess I kind of look at it as, there might be one, and then there's two, and then there's five. And so at some point, what's the tipping point and, and the traffic? And I think this has happened a lot in agriculture in the county, where one person has done an event center. And then the neighbor wants an event center. And then you have tons of traffic on a road that it was not designed to have that much traffic. So that's how I look at planning is, we're planning for basically worst case scenario of what's going to happen in the future. If everybody did want to farm or everybody did want to have a farm stand. So just saying that out loud. Um, I, I have some questions about the community garden. And I look at it as, um, if it says we could have it in parks, which I think is great. But would this city of Katati, or would they do a third party like Farmsters? Where they would, or a, a nonprofit would come into the park and do the community garden? And have basically a farm stand where the profit was going to go back to that. Um, to that third party or that nonprofit. So that's one of my questions. And which, you know, I, I think once you start taking property that is city property. And you start having third party folks take over, then you start to get into, um. You know, there's a, a, a lot of other nonprofits. Do we favor one nonprofit over the other? So anyways, a couple of my questions that way. Um, and I do have a question from, for the, or comments about the seven AM to seven PM. And um, on the, on the weekends, seven to five. I was so privileged to have a community garden right next door to me um, for the last seventeen years. And um, good or bad, I have used a lot of the, the, the food from there. And I've also been impacted by people coming very early in the morning with big groups of people. And I couldn't imagine having everybody be there with machinery early in the morning. Um, Noah mentioned that it's the same as construction, but construction stops after the house is built. So um, I just have an issue with times of seven AM to seven PM in a residential neighborhood. Of having a farm stand and having um, machinery being used. And it could be used all day. There's no caveat on this. It just says, those are the hours that you can do machinery in a community garden. So I always say, you know, if you live next door to one and you basically had somebody plowing all day long. Or using machinery all day long, then it's only your issue, but it's a big issue. So those are my comments and those are my concerns on this.
Uh, so then I have a question for staff. Um, based on that comment, is there an opportunity to adjust some of the times? I also heard something about the, the stands being open until seven o'clock every day and five o'clock on the weekends. Um, and I know sometimes people don't get off of work until five o'clock, so maybe they might want to stop by, starting at six o'clock. You know, an hour earlier is, is a more feasible time or those are even opportunities. Um, that's a question that I have based on some of the comments I'm hearing, but I see that also um, Vice Chair Hancock has his hand up.
Yes, hi. Um, again, I mean, I'm on the engineering side of things and I tend to calibrate. So, you know, even though we have a wide range of times, I, I'm, I really just don't think that everybody. There just isn't the space to do that. When somebody's doing something, they're not going to be put in there. So I, I just feel the times are fine at the moment. Um, in putting, um, you know, enabling people to do some work, um, when they need to actually do it. I mean, I know there's people out there who say I love work. I could look at it all day. But I tend to be a hands-on person when I want to do something and I support other people, particularly for agriculture. And being able to get in there, um, it's just, it's not very much. I mean, it's just, why are we making it more complicated is what I've got to say about it. So I'm, I'm all for the simpler approach. And um, as I said, I, you know, I, I, I think we could extend it more rather than um, restrict it more. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments from commissioners? Okay, staff, um, so should we then see if someone wants to make a motion under resolution?
Yeah, just really quickly, um, we have looked it up and we've confirmed. Uh, Commissioner Murphy is within five hundred feet of the Fletti Ranch property. So if we could break the motion in half on the text amendments, which are the change of land use tables as we've been talking about. And then a separate motion and a vote on the map amendment, which is to actually rezone the Fletti Ranch property. Uh, that would allow Chair Murphy to vote on one and to abstain from the other. And then just briefly to answer Chair Moore or Commissioner Moore's question. Uh, the city is, is not uh, interested in operating any of those activities. It would be through either a third party um, nonprofit or maybe a license agreement with a community. So if there was a park right next door to a, a, um, you know, an apartment project or a, a condo project or a single family home. They could license with the city to have a community garden in the park space next door. But um, this, these amendments would allow that process to occur, whereas right now the code is silent on allowing that.
Can I make a, a proposal?
Yes.
So I'd like to propose as the first part of this that we, or we make an amendment. So I'm using the, we, we have rules on here that the crop production and horticulture be extended to NL and MM. In the um, table two point two. And if anybody else supports that, I think we can, I need a second person for that amendment. So if nobody else is prepared to support that, then that motion will fail, just sort of.
I just need a minute to look.
I did have the um page, but I'm, I think it's page fifty. So right now crop production, horticulture and orchard and vineyard are specified for O S C, O S R. R R, rural residential, R V L. And then N L and N M. It's not at the moment permitted, but we still have space within those districts. Within those land usages. There's larger parcel sizes, like I say, my parcel. So. That's my proposal is, is that that permitted be extended to N L and N M. Page fifty on the um PDF page fifty. So if nobody's supported, I'll, I'll withdraw it if. Okay, sorry.
Hi. Chair Limas, if, if you don't mind. Um. I was just gonna say that, um, I think it's an interesting proposal and. But since it does open up such a significant portion of the city to this change. Um, I wonder if it would be more appropriate to ask staff if that's something that. We look into any sort of thoughts or consequences or outcomes and, and address separately.
Uh, if the, if, so, so the commission is making a recommendation to the city council. So the city council is ultimately going to make the decision. Uh, the fact that it's being discussed here will allow the city council to expand it if, if they feel it's necessary or supported. Uh, but if the commission is interested in doing so, then they could, um, as a part of the recommendation. Recommend to be expanded, but then ask staff to maybe address some of the hours of operations or other kind of. Um. Operational characteristics. Specific to those activities that could essentially staff could maybe let, make them be. Less permissible in those smaller parcels. To try to, to address both sides of the issue, both to allow it to expand throughout the city as Commissioner Hancock's recommending. But then also to try to put some sideboards on how that operation could. Uh, potentially affect surrounding properties, given that they're going to be smaller. And that's if the commission is supportive.
Uh, Commissioner Moore.
So I have a question on that. Um. So. Crop production, orchard, vineyard, so I could take my whole front yard and make it a vineyard?
That is correct. There are, I'm sorry, actually. Uh, the rules, as they're currently stated, and I'll ask um Associate Planner Bus to correct me if I misspeak. Uh, require you to, to um. To respect the setbacks of your property. So the same setbacks that apply to most properties or to your property for your structures, so your house. Also apply to your crop production activities. So to your question, uh, that generally is going to be fifteen to twenty feet in the. Front and rear property and ten feet on the side property line. So there is some five to ten feet depending on your zone. So there is, there will be some separation, but if you have a relatively large front yard, a, a portion of it could be turned into an orchard or a vineyard. Um, as you're, you're referencing.
Okay.
I'd, I'd like to refine that uh just a little bit. So actually, the, uh, the front setback is uh twenty-five feet that's proposed. And so that is what is the current primary structure setback in R R and R V L. Okay, so we're mirroring the primary structure setbacks in, in these, uh, you know, in this proposal. So that would be front twenty-five feet. The side, side interior ten feet, the side that faces a street would be twenty feet and the rear is twenty feet.
I'd, I, I, a quick question maybe. What would be to stop people doing that now anyway?
To stop them from?
If people wanted to plant trees.
Oh, right.
Trees, make an orchard at the moment in their front yards. Is there anybody going to object and, and invoke a. An ordinance to say, hey, you're, you're um become a criminal? Um.
So, uh, Commissioner Hancock, that's a good point. As of right now, everyone is allowed to do this by right in their property for themselves. There are no limits on, on you planting your entire, your entire property as an orchard or a vineyard, et cetera, for your own personal use. This allows you to do that and then use that um product for commercial purposes, so essentially to sell it.
Yeah, the crop production land use uh definition specifically calls out that um home gardening is a different activity. And so it is true that home gardening um would not actually be subject to those setbacks. So is, and the difference is, is commercial or not?
Okay, so uh with that clarification, uh, was there more questions or did you want to look at the resolution? I'm not sure if Vice Chair um Hancock wanted to proceed with his amendment.
I think if nobody's supporting it, the amendment fails, but I certainly would like it to go forward as a discussion item. Or be, be visible as a discussion item. Um.
Okay.
As a recommendation to the city council, I guess. That's really what we're doing.
Okay. So since we discussed it, it sounds like they would bring it up to the city council. Um, is that right, Steph? Uh, Noah?
Yes, yes.
Autumn, okay.
Be in the staff report.
Okay.
So can I make a second amendment then? I mean, a second proposal?
Go ahead.
I'd like to propose that the um ordinance as written with the um corrections to the map. Um, be put up for a vote. So the correction is that the open space. I guess is not correctly designated on the map and there'll be a new designation in there.
And I think we also have to make the resolution without the land use, right? Uh, Steph?
Yeah, it's, we'll describe it as map amendments and text amendments. So the changes to the code, uh, all four commissioners can vote on. So those are text amendments. And then a separate motion, uh, second and vote for the map amendment, which is to rezone Filetti Ranch to open space recreation.
Okay, then I'll address the text amendments. I'm proposing to um put a vote forward to approve the text as it stands.
Okay, so um Vice Chair Hancock has made a motion. Is there a second?
I will second.
Okay, was that? Um, Commissioner Murphy? Okay. Okay, so we have a first and a second. Can we have a roll call?
Commissioner Moore?
No.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hancock?
Yes.
Chair Limas?
Yes.
Then I'll make another motion to approve the um zoning changes. Um, I forgot the exact words that you used. Um, Noah?
Rezone Filetti Ranch to open space con, uh, recreation.
Rezone Filetti Ranch to open space and to correct the map. And that's, I guess, there's just three of us that can vote on that.
Um. Um, so do we have a second? I'll second it. Can I, can I also second it? Okay, so I'll second. And then we'll do a roll call.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Commissioner Murphy, I think.
I know, I was gonna have her say abstain. Uh, Commissioner Rodriguez? Uh, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Hancock?
Yes.
Chair Limas?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, so um, so that passed and we're going on to the next item? And do we have a presentation for the second item?
Thank you, Chair Limas, members of the commission. My name is JP Harris, senior planner with the city of Katari. And tonight we're talking about multifamily housing uh project streamlining and removals of barriers to development. As we'll discuss, these largely come out of the current general plan and housing element uh that we're currently working under. Next slide, please. Um, this is a slide that um you have seen before. I've brought it up at, at a several different meetings, but this is uh an effort that is funded by an SB two planning grant. This was part of a, the SB two is part of a fifteen bill housing package. Uh, that was assigned by the governor in twenty seventeen, aimed at addressing the housing shortage and high housing costs. Specifically, the Building Jobs and Homes Act. Um, we applied for a grant. To help us accomplish some of the code uh changes that the state was wanting done. As well as some of the code changes that our general plan required. Which we received, and this is the, the final and last item that um. That we would be completing under that grant. The first was the ADU, JADU code amendment. The second was the cottage housing. Uh, third, we did the objective design guidelines, and this is uh the multifamily housing streamlining uh aspect of it. Next slide, please. So the proposed ordinance, which is, which begins on page one seventy, whoops, excuse me, one sixty-nine of your packet. Um, does four things. It uh removes the requirement for a use permit to develop multifamily housing in the N M. Which is the neighborhood medium density zoning district and the N U neighborhood urban zoning districts. These are our two highest residential zoning districts in terms of density. Um, it would increase the maximum allowed land coverage in N M zoning districts. This is on a bi-parcel basis. So fifty percent to fifty-five percent. This is on an individual parcel. It increases the max um allowed land coverage in the N U zoning districts from sixty percent to seventy-five percent. And it would increase the uh maximum allowable height in the N U zoning district. From twenty-eight feet to thirty height. Uh, next slide, please. This direction comes directly out of the general plan. In some cases, it's very specific and we've been stuck to that. So uh, the land use element has one action item that, that we are required to review the standards in the land use code. And basically amend them or clean it up to make sure it's consistent with the general plan that was adopted in twenty fifteen. And um. Two items that are specifically called out in that action item are to increase the maximum building height in the N U zoning district. Without the requirement for a use permit. And increase the site coverage on N M and N U zones. Uh, as shown, fifty to fifty-five percent and up to seventy-five percent in the urban zone. Additionally, um, there's another action element, which is a little more broad. In that it's that we are to review and update our development permitting process and look for ways to streamline and make it more straightforward. Um, and at a minimum, the reviews supposed to consider methods to streamline and simplify the process. Including process for review by city staff as well as various committees and commissions. You know, we did part of this already by. Um. Uh, creating the design review administration and eliminating design review committee. This is another step in that. And then also look for opportunities to reduce redundancies and delays. Um, next slide, please. This says land use element at the top, and I realize that's a mistake. That should say housing element. These, these two items come out of the housing element. Um, you just had a meeting, a joint meeting with the city council where you talked about various programs. Uh, that would be going into the new housing element that we're presently working on. These come out of the current housing uh element. So it does say that the land use code will be amended to remove two potential barriers to the provision of multifamily housing. One amendment will be to remove the conditional use permit requirement for multifamily development of five units or more in the N U zone. And the second is to reduce parking requirements. This ordinance does not propose to address parking at this time. Um. That's a much more controversial issue and we're really just focused on uh the use tables at this point. Um. Program three point nine is to monitor use permit requirements for affordable housing. And again, reiterates the, the um. Desire to monitor whether or not uh we should be using use permits in the N U zone. Next slide, please. So just to give you an idea of what's proposed, some people understand what I mean when I talk about land use coverage. Um, it is any and impermeable, any impermeable surface on a property. So that would include any buildings. As well as asphalt, um, concrete, uh, decks or driveways. And so this, this is an image of kind of how we measure land coverage. And again, in the N M district, we would increase it by five percent. In the N U, we would increase it by fifteen percent up to seventy-five. And then just so that you have something to compare it to, N L, which is the typical single-family residential. Um, zoning that's largely uh on the east part of Katari, that has a forty percent land coverage limitation. And then when you get into the R V L and R R. Depending on the size of the property, the land coverage varies from ten to thirty percent. The larger the property, the lower the amount of allowed coverage you can have. The lower the percentage of um, uh, land coverage. And next slide. Um, this is the snippet of the land use table that comes out of chapter seventeen point twenty-two of the land use code. And this shows what the, what, what the ordinance would do. It would have basically removed the. Use permit requirement for multifamily housing in both the N M and the N U district. And um, then it would be permiss, permitted. And I will talk about this a little bit more as we move on, but this would not be. What some people think of as just straight by right development, meaning that um it would. This would not create a ministerial process for the city is what I'm trying to say. There still is a discretionary process that requires public hearings, depending on the nature of the project. Would have to go to the planning commission for approval, or if there were subdivision aspect to it. Or if the planning commission wanted to uh defer their decision, it could go to the city council. The. One thing I will make a note of, which I discussed in the staff report, is the programs and the recommendations were specific to N U. Um, we decided at staff level to include the N M zoning district in it. And it was largely because our feeling was the areas where we have zoned N M have been evaluated. And determined to be appropriate for that type of development. It, the findings that we have to make for design review approval, and we'll discuss this a little, a little further. Are very close to the findings that we have to make for a use permit. And um, we felt it was, it would be appropriate to go ahead and propose this as a change. Uh, to permit or streamline multifamily housing development. Next slide, please. Um, and this is again a snippet of the proposed ordinance. It does show in the N U, this is the neighborhood urban zone. Uh, main structures are limited to twenty-five feet, but can go to thirty-five feet with a use permit. This would just allow it to go to thirty-five feet. And then that area, that um. Uh, that section kind of below, um, it's not crossed out on the slide because it would be too hard to read. But um, it will, the ordinance would eliminate this. it's not crossed out on this slide because it would be too hard to read, but it will, the ordinance would eliminate this provision. So buildings up to thirty-five feet would be allowed without a use permit. There'd be no requirement for affordable housing, except for what we already have in our code, which is a fifteen percent requirement. And it would not have this restriction of placing multifamily buildings thirty-five feet next to a single story and then restricting it to twenty-five feet or twenty-eight feet. So this entire section here will go away. And it would just be, they would be allowed to build the thirty-five feet, provided that we can make the design, the findings for approval of design review. Next slide, please. This is a picture of the zoning map. It includes pretty much the areas. I eliminated the west side so that I could make the image bigger for your packet as well as for slides. But I wanted you to be able to see where the NU and NM zoning districts are located. These are all pretty much developed or, or in some cases, underdeveloped. But largely, we're looking at all infill. There's nothing on the fringes of Catari that would be affected by this ordinance. And I do list the packet page one sixty-one, if you want to look at your own packet a little more closer. It will say the places where you see NM with the hash marks through it, those are mobile home parks. If you wonder why it has that, that hash mark on it, that's, that's what those are. Next slide, please. So the primary effects of the proposed amendments would be to increase land coverage, which would result in perhaps more density up to the limits. And it might allow for larger units. Often if a developer is having trouble needing density, they may build just smaller units. We always want to see a variety of sizes because families come in different sizes. The use permit findings would not be required, so the, the effect that that would have is essentially, it, the, it doesn't have much of an effect on our findings, because we do still have to make the findings for design review and the approval still would be discretionary. What it mostly probably will affect is the scope of a SEQA document when SEQA is applicable. So under SEQA, we would be really limiting to, our SEQA analysis would, would be limited to design review matters that are called out for in the code. And in the case of Catari, a lot of that does get to land use type matters. Another thing, though, is many of these properties would probably be eligible for infill exemptions. So this would make this point kind of moot if they did. But it is something to be aware of, that there would be a lowered threshold on kind of the SEQA, the lower scope of the SEQA analysis. Next slide, please. And I, this is in the packet as well, and I did want to put it there so you could see kind of the, how the, what the comparison is between making use permits, findings, and making findings for design review. And if you go through these, you'd find that there's a lot of overlap in these particular findings. For example, number two under use permit is identical to number seven. Three in under use permit is very close to number two. As, and basically, there's, there's just a lot of overlap between these two. And I'm not going to go through all of these. They are in your packet. I'm happy to answer any questions about them, though. And then next slide, please. And so our recommendation is adoption of the attached resolution, which would recommend city council adoption of the draft ordinance to streamline multi, multifamily housing permitting and remove barriers to multifamily housing development. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you.
And to hear any comments and recommendations.
Okay, thank you. So Vice Chair Hancock?
Yes, hello. I'm, I'm just a little bit confused with your presentation versus what I've got in the packet. So I do see the map in the packet, but can you tell me what page that last slide was on, packet page?
Yes, that is under, it is on packet page one. It starts on one sixty-two at the bottom of packet page one sixty-two and continues on to package page one sixty-three.
So it's not in the same format as what?
It's not in the same format, no. I wrote them out. The, the use permit, the findings are presented first, and then the design review findings are presented on page one sixty-three after I discuss the use permit.
Yeah, that, it's, it is just a bit confusing not being able to follow the slides and, and sort of make comments and have to figure it out. You know, in what the staff presentation is versus what you're actually doing. So, so got a question, though. I mean, we're talking about doing or changing something, but what is the amount of, I mean, looking at the map, there really isn't a lot of spare in NL. There isn't really a lot of extra or, or spare spaces. So what is the coverage that's currently in there? What is the current build out? I guess that's the words I'm looking for. Sorry for taking my time on that, but what's the current build out of that NL space currently?
Well, nothing in today's proposal would affect anything in the NL.
Correct. So what, how much space, how much of the current plots, how many of the unbuilt plots would it actually affect? And if somebody decided to do some upzoning or to do some improvements in the future, they would be able to do it according to this new. So it's really, the question is, is what's the current coverage? What's the current availability? I'm trying to find the words for it. Sorry about that.
I, I think I understand what you're saying. I don't have, I, I, that's why I provide the map. I don't have a breakdown, at least not right, right at my fingertips, on which percentage of the entire city's area is NM or NU compared to, to the rest of the zoning. But it is fairly limited overwhelmingly.
No, actually, so the question I've got, what is the area that this might apply to in the future? If a builder was to come along and want to do, you know, for what we're voting on, the, the NL space looks to me, the available space to be built in only looks to be less than twenty percent. It's already built out eighty percent is what I, I think I'm eyeballing.
I would agree. I, I, I'm hoping I'm catching what you're saying. I would agree, the majority of the lands in Catari on this, on kind of west, east, excuse me, east of highway one oh one is largely built out. There are a few areas in the NM district that have not been developed out, and those would be, though they've already been subdivided to a certain extent, Lund Hill Lane. There is a series of eight lots along Lund Hill Lane that are not developed currently, but have been subdivided into their parcels. Ryan Lane is another example, though the city is just, is just now undertaking a project there, affordable housing project. And then I guess a lot at East Catari, kind of along behind the Chevron Station, there's some land. And behind that preschool, there's some land that could be developed, which looks vacant, but it's really split zoning on those properties.
I'm having to go back to the bigger map. I mean, as I, I, I got it wrong there, it's NM and NU.
Yeah.
And those really, I, I guess it's the west side is where we've got the largest potential densities.
There is no NM or NU zoning west of highway one oh one. What the most, the, the potential there for, you know, much more increased residential development is within the CG, the Gravestine Corridor District, and that's a mixed use district.
Okay, I got that. I got that wrong, just looking at the colors. The colors are so similar between CG and, and so NM and NU is really just east.
Yes.
And it's, it's a very small number of properties.
That's right. I mean, there, there are quite a, there's quite a few, but they're mostly developed currently.
Right, very small number of undeveloped.
That's right. There are, but you, you know, this ordinance would allow a redevelopment of a property.
To increase its density.
It, well, no, we're not changing density. We're just simply eliminating the use permit requirement. We're not changing, not proposing to change density anywhere. In the NU district, we are proposing to allow for increased height without a use permit, but nothing higher than what isn't already basically allowable. So there's, this, this ordinance does not increase density. It might allow by, by increasing the allowable coverage. It might allow, it would make it easier for a developer to achieve the maximum density. If you follow that. One of the comments we hear from developers is our land coverage limitations make it hard to get to a higher, the higher their end of the density charts. So there's a potential you would see an effect of, but it would not be increasing the allowable density.
Thank you.
Was there any other part of your question that I missed?
No, that was great. Thank you. That was, I was difficult to get the question phrase right. I think I got there. Thank you very much.
Okay, now let's go to Commissioner Marking.
Thanks. I had a few questions, but just to go back to that on, on the density, maybe I'm not understanding what I read right. But if there are, if there's housing in these NM or NU areas and they were to redevelop on that housing, you could develop higher density housing, right? Multi-unit housing?
You, let's just say that the property was underdeveloped and meaning that it wasn't developed at the density that would be allowed today. Then the answer is yes, you would be able to redevelop a property at a higher density than what it currently is. But again, I will repeat that this zoning, that, that, these changes don't make any recommendations to increase density on any parcel. I, that might make it easier for them to achieve the density maximums that we already have.
I was just, and I'm probably dumbing this down a lot, but I was just thinking, if someone lived in an NM or NU area and they decided they wanted to, you know, use more of the space, as we're talking about here, and put, you know, a duplex or triplex on that space, this is, this is allowing that, is?
It might allow it, provided that it doesn't, it doesn't cause their density to be exceeded more than what's allowed by our zoning and state law density bonus law. But um, I, I guess that's the only way I can answer it. It's, is, it does, it, the, the only changes in terms of development capacity, I think that is maybe the root of your question, would come from the increase in land coverage, which means, so it gives them, you know, they have to meet a lot of things. They have to provide, there's the building footprint itself, and then there's the parking and access. And so they would be, it would make it easier for them to maybe to build a project at the densities that we require.
Okay.
The only other thing I would add is that it's, it's also trying to streamline the process. So right now, you would have to request a use permit and a design review application. And this removes the use permit. It basically says, we already have identified this is an area where we want this type of a use, meaning apartments in the neighborhood urban as an example. So we don't need the use permit, but we still want to look at the design and take that through a public process to make sure that it's appropriate for the site.
That's correct.
Okay. And that side by side was helpful, but could you maybe touch on some of the differences between the use, minor use and design? It's, for example, if we were to go to design, what would we not be getting without that use permit? Or even if it were changed to a minor use permit? And the reason I mentioned the minor use permit is because we just talked about how having a fruit stand would require a minor use permit. So it makes me a little nervous not having something for something so much more impactful like multifamily housing. And that's kind of what I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around.
Yeah, if you could go back one slide, please. And let's put those, that table comparison up.
One moment, JP.
Sure. And I apologize for the wordiness of the slides, but again, it is on your packet page is one. If you want to read it more carefully, it starts on one sixty-two and goes to one sixty-three. It's not a side by side, it's use permit and then design review discussed. But in my opinion, you don't lose anything through these findings. That's, to me, this is an easy recommendation to make, because I feel like there's nothing that we're not looking at in design review that we would be looking at through the use permit process. They are very redundant. And you can read, you can read them for yourself and see how, actually, there's more findings to make for design review than there are for, for a use permit. Use permit, we make this for any kind of use, be it from, what do I want to say? You know, having a cannabis business to having a automotive repair facility to building a house. I mean, so we, we, we look at, we're making these kind of decisions all the time. Often, we apply the use permit process to where we're trying to decide, all right, we agree the use is there, but is this an appropriate use really for that area? Even though it might be allowed in that area. We do the same thing, in my opinion, by using design, by a fairly robust design review process that we have here in Catari. And we have to look at all of these items on the right-hand side and find that all of this is correct through a public process. So I would say you're not going to lose anything with respect to eliminating the use permit. And the use permit may not go away entirely, because, and I don't want to make it more confusing, but we do require a certain level of affordable housing. And if a developer chooses to take advantage of the state's density bonus program, that's where they can start to go beyond our regulations. And then we apply a use permit process. So if the developer, you know, we have a height limit, and if a developer says, well, I'm going to provide this much affordable housing, therefore I want a concession on the height limit. Not only are they going to be subject to design review, they will be subject to a use permit in those cases. In those cases, they're going beyond the standards of, of our code. But working within our code, I think that the design review process provides, I think, the, our I would say it, it doesn't take anything away from your ability to review the project, condition the project, and, and even deny the project in some cases.
Yeah, and I would just add, getting back to the, the minor use permit for the farm stand reference, because I do think it's a good, it's a good comparison. Use permits are really appropriate when you want to look and, and question whether or not a specific type of use, usually commercial, is appropriate for a specific property. And JP uses a great example of an auto shop. So, you know, a mechanic's shop is loud, they store a lot of different chemicals, they have a variety of different things that happen. They have outdoor storage of vehicles, all those things. So even though the zoning district might say auto shops are okay in this zone, it almost always it almost always requires a use permit because you want to look at the specific sites to make sure it's not in an area where that that those operational characteristics are going to have an impact. We did the same thing when we thought about a farm stand that was, which is a business, a commercial operation, proposing to operate within a residential district, right? So it's important to think about, should we allow a commercial use, even if it's a small scale one, to go on in a residential neighborhood? Because those things are very different from each other. And when you move into a residential neighborhood, you don't think about the potential for a business to be operating from your neighbor's house generally. But the question before the commission this evening, and really the direction from the general plan that's telling us to do this, says, look, we've already thought about these few areas of town where we think it's appropriate to have multifamily housing or apartments or condos. And those are the ones that we've zoned neighborhood urban and neighborhood medium. Because we were saying, this is where these should go here. And so staff is bringing forward this recommendation. Say, if we've already said those uses are appropriate in those zoning districts as apartments, we don't really need to question uh the use so much, which is what a use permit does. We really want to think about the design and how the that building is going to fit into that site. And so that's just another way to to kind of think about the proposal.
Thank you. I had one last question. Um, on one of your slides, slides under SEQA, you referenced infill exemption. Could you explain what that is?
Yeah, within SEQA, there's a series, there's a series of exemptions that apply to different projects. Um, one of them, and there are many, uh, is called an infill exemption. And that is where you have urban, basically you have a project, like a development project like what we have here or could envision, that is surrounded on all sides by urban development and um, is a project that complies with the zoning and the general plan. They would be exempt from a thorough SEQA review. So many of the areas that we're looking at where this zoning effect would take place, I haven't done a site by site analysis and I can't until I have a project in front of me. But many of them would certainly be eligible for this infill type exemption. Yeah. There's, there's a whole series of exemptions within the law uh that, one exemption that you see a lot um, when we talk about uses is um, it's called existing facilities exemption. It's like when you put a business in it into existing building, is that really having an impact on 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 the environment? And most of the time it's it's no, you know, we, we're just changing swapping out businesses. So that's a different type of exemption. I specifically mentioned the info exemption because I think that would probably be pretty applicable to the type of developments that we, that this ordinance considers. And um, and I just want you to be aware that there, there might be a reduction in SEQA review. And Noah actually can talk well about this because it's a new paradigm in SEQA uh, and that it would be limited mostly to design review. However, that being said, I want you to also understand that most of these places would probably be eligible for a full-blown exemption anyway. But I'm just, I guess that's all I can add to that. And if you have, if you need a clarifying answer, I'll do my best.
No, that makes sense. Thank you. Those were all my questions.
Thank you. And I wanted to give Commissioner Moore an opportunity. She had any questions for staff?
I don't have any questions. I, I think this is pretty straightforward. I, I do appreciate all the uh the information that JP talked about with the, with the different um coverage of the, of the lot sizes um, that are going to change. Um, and I, and I do like the idea of doing the height limit um, a little bit taller or making it consistent with the city um instead of having to get a um, I guess a variance or or, you know, um, permit to do that. I think that's been very haphazard in the past of 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 that. Um, has there been any, I, I just have a question for staff. Has there been any talk about with a height limit um instead of going obviously out to go up more? I know thirty-five feet is what we're proposing, but I'm, I'm just curious on that.
Not, no, we haven't made any considerations to to increase height um more than already what our general plan and and the environmental documents are associated have proposed.
Okay.
Um, within the city, most of the residential areas, um, they, like when your neighborhood, the NL districts have a twenty-eight height, twenty-eight foot height limit. Um, that's pretty much across the board. When you get into the commercials areas, it goes from twenty-eight to thirty-five feet. And actually down near the intersection of Gravenstein Highway and Old Redwood Highway in that area, there, there's a fifty-foot height limit. So um, just to give you the scope, but no, we're not proposing anything um that's not already been recommended in in the general plan and housing element.
But Commissioner Moore, to that point, when we bring the housing element discussion forward, if that's a program that the commission would like us to consider to, to your point, I think, allow folks to go a little bit more dense versus trying to sprawl out, that would be a great time to suggest that.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate. Thank you. And now I, here's Vice Chair Hancock, go ahead. Follow-up question?
Yeah, sorry, a follow-up question on that. I just looking at the map and I seen that there are hatched areas for the N M zone, the neighborhood uh, medium and that under the, I guess, the bigger map earlier, that was called a county pre-zoned area. And that looks very much to be in synchronism with the, I guess, the um low-income housing areas. I just wonder if you can talk about, is there any impact on that? Could, I know there's been a
It, it might be the size that you're looking at that's making it difficult to discern. But the pre-zoned area actually has crosshatching, so the hatches go in both directions.
Well, it's actually just one area, one direction, but whatever. On the map, it's.
And then on, on the, the areas on the map on page one sixty-one, those have the single hatch lines.
Mobile home parks.
That's right. Right, that's right.
So since they're in the N M district, would they be impacted by this? I guess what we're not looking for is is that residents there would be evicted. Landowners in the past have had a propensity to try and evict everybody and then build housing in there. But would this impact them?
That's, that's I would say not directly. Um, when closing a mobile home park is way beyond what we're talking about here. And there's a lot of factors that go into that, including the dislocation and the repopulation of people. There is the zoning that exists for mobile home parks exists as an overlay. Let's just say someone were to eliminate the mobile home park and go through that very arduous process of doing that. I would say, and I haven't given this a lot of thought, but I think that the underlying zoning would probably be N M. And they would be eligible to, they, they, well, basically, they could, they would have to follow the rules for N M zoning. It's a higher density area.
Nothing, nothing before the commission this evening would make that process any different than it would be today.
Okay, good. That's just what I wanted to ask. Thank you.
Thank you. And um, I don't have any questions, but I do want to go, did we already go to the public? No, not yet, right? Yes. So uh, is there any questions from the public before we bring it back to the commission?
Attendees in the audience, please use the raised hand icon to speak and share your comment, or if you're dialing in, use star nine. No public comment.
Okay, no comments. Okay. So um, going back to the commission, uh, do any of the commissioners or uh have any further questions?
I think I just have a, I think we're into the what we like about it or don't like about it. So I, I think I like it. I'm also reading a book that comes up through Petaluma called Strong Towns. You probably can't see it. But the discussion there is really how to allow areas to evolve in time. And I think this would allow that for um a lot of the areas that are there. So I see that the areas mostly are already um built, have a, have something on them. And this would just allow another evolution mostly is what I'm seeing. So I support it.
Thank you. Um, uh, Commissioner Marky?
Yeah, I was just um gonna share similarly uh thoughts on it. I, I, I do have concerns with it. I think part of where my concerns lie are, um, I take it pretty, try to stay very um focused on when we do design review as a commission member to really look at design and not necessarily look at um, whether or not it's a right or wrong decision. Um, I, I try to make sure that we're focusing on what our role is. And I think that's where it makes me a little bit nervous is that um in some of these areas, you know, we are looking at housing that um, either doesn't have multi-unit housing on it or maybe has small multi-unit housing that could become a larger multi-unit housing. And that could be severely impactful to the neighborhood from a parking perspective, you know, just from kind of the change in scope of the neighborhood. And even though I'm wholeheartedly committed to trying to figure out how we can implement better, more affordable housing um, in Kattati, I, I just think taking this away definitely takes away a level of um kind of scrutiny around making sure that it's the right fit. So uh, I, I do think that's kind of what I was getting at with some of my questions and just wanted to summarize it a little bit better.
So any other comments from the commission?
Just want to say I, I, I agree. Um, I, I think I, it's a kind of a double-edged sword. I look at some of the properties on East Kattati Avenue that probably are underdeveloped and could have more housing on them. And they have maybe just a few multifamily units on them right now and in the future. As Neil was saying, that, you know, they'll evolve probably to more dense or, you know, multifamily units. I see that happening a lot in Petaluma right now. Um, with all the development by the waterfronts where there's been um maybe some obviously increase in density. So um, I'm interested to see the town next to us, how that plays out with um the increase in density on their waterfront um down there and, and uh, I'm, I'm definitely, like I said, I can see both sides of it. So um, but I'm in favor of of the resolution.
Thank you. And I didn't have uh any questions. I felt like my, my fellow commissioners asked a lot of really great questions and that uh some were similar to things that I was questioning about it. So I appreciate all the great information from JP and Noah. Um, so now let's uh go and see who would like, is there someone in the commission that would like to make a motion on the resolution?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Uh, I make a motion to the resolution of planning commissioner of the city of Kattati recommending, recommending city council adoption of an ordinance amending this is city council, I guess it would be us or city council.
Uh, let's see.
You would be
recommending city council adoption of an ordinance amending section seventeen point two four point zero to allowable land uses and section seventeen point two four point zero three oh, standards of all development and land uses of the Kattati land use code to streamline the review of certain multifamily housing projects and remove barriers to multifamily housing development.
Thank you. Is there a second? Okay, um, Vice Chair Hancock?
I'll second it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And can we have a roll call?
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
No.
Vice Chair Hancock?
Yes.
Chair Lemus?
Yes. Okay, thank you. And so now we're go to reports by staff.
Thank you, Chair Lemus. Uh, just briefly, just wanted to uh obviously recognize Autumn Bus. Uh, she was a new hire here at the city and uh, she's been a great fit, just jumped right in and was able to really pick up that urban ag ordinance. And she will be finishing up the Vunnerf ordinance for us as well. Uh, and I just think she's been a great fit for Kattati and for staff. So you all will be seeing her uh, more often as we uh get more uh projects coming before the commission, which we do anticipate to have a fairly busy spring and summer. Um, as you're well aware, we're kind of the housing elements is going um, full steam ahead. And we do anticipate some additional opportunities for public engagement. Uh, I'm looking at three different opportunities, both have a coffee with the planner, maybe a more evening oriented uh restaurant meeting where, you know, outdoors, but where we could allow folks to come and just chat with us directly. Uh, we're imagining one would be maybe a Kattati coffee and another in the, during the daytime morning hours and another being maybe at Trade Winds or something, just trying to capture a broad perspective from the community, all different uh demographics. We really want to hear from everyone. And then we'll also do a Zoom meeting opportunity for folks. Uh, those are all going to be kind of town hall open forums. And we're looking at those getting going really around the end of March, early April. And then we'll be taking all that input, plus all the background work we've been doing and coming forward with another presentation to the joint uh commission council in May for additional feedback on uh the sites, opportunity sites. Um, the programs that are uh being created from the input we've received so far and just the draft document itself. Uh, then we'll take that additional input we get from the commission and council, further refine it, and then we'll publish the document for public review and comment uh likely in June. Uh, that will also tee off the SEQA process for that document. Uh, so those will be going in parallel. Um, those, there's mandated uh open comment periods uh for that, so that'll likely go early summer. And then we'll wrap up the final draft and start the process to go before uh the state for review and and further comment, further refining. Uh, and just one more point on that. So as we've been looking at the proximity of some commissioners and council members to some of those housing opportunity sites, it does seem that a lot of planning commissioners uh are in close proximity to some of those properties. Uh, and so we will be flagging that and letting you know, and then you can um, we'll, we'll orient the presentation in a way that allows commissioners to abstain as needed or commissioner or council members to abstain as needed on those elements of the discussion. And so just be aware that that, that we are identifying that. And I do really appreciate Chair or Commissioner Murphy being uh thoughtful on that and and really paying attention, because that is our job as staff. And I feel that I, I could have done a better job of that. So, uh, but anyway, I just want to give you a heads up on that. Um, other than that, I don't really have anything to present on other than that we are also recruiting for a part-time technician. Some of you are aware, we had a administrative analyst, Brittany Bobber, who left the city and we are retooling that into a planning technician position to just try to help with more specific uh CD, community development related issues. And so um, we have a recruitment going. We're hope to be able to fill that part-time job uh with somebody who uh is really ready to hit the ground running and keep moving uh on helping us with some front counter support, also to backup carry and clerk in the meetings. And then also to take on some of the lower level projects uh such as signs and tree removals, et cetera. So a lot's happening in the department. Um, but that's all I have for you now. And look for, we'll try to give you as much heads up as we can on those meeting dates as we uh really formalize them.
Thank you. And do we have any reports by commissioners? Okay, go ahead. Um, Vice Chair Hancock?
Yes, hello. I was actually more of a question for Noah. Um, and I'm just wondering, you did send around those um um Califor, the League of Cities um educational opportunities. And I, I was, I mean, that is quite a distance to go San Remo on, so I'm kind of looking at it, but it's, it's, I'm just wondering though, with Sonoma State, the geography, environment and planning department used to do a presentation. Um, and I'm wondering if there's anything that you know about coming up through that. That seemed like it was an easier local commitment. So, um.
Yeah, thank you for the question. That's a good point. So, um, so first off, I have not heard anything from Sonoma State as to when they're anticipating getting their uh planning commissioners conference going again. You are correct. They have an excellent conference they used to put on every year. It was very affordable, obviously very approachable for us and really, really good. Um, since COVID, it has not happened. And it's typically, I believe, going from memory, I think it's normally a February thing. Uh, and so they have, I have not heard from them when they're going to get it going again, or if they're going to replace the one that they didn't hold this year. Um, yeah. Uh, but that being said, if you do, and I will continue to look for, and if you see training opportunities that you're interested in, we do budget to help support uh our planning commissioners to get some training opportunities. And we absolutely recommend you do it. I will keep my eye out on some training that, unfortunately, the planning conference, it's I will keep my eye out on some training. Unfortunately, the planning conference that's coming up is in Anaheim. So that's quite a distance away. That's put on by the American Association of Planners. I'm, all of us are members in the department. It's a great conference. Obviously, it's been virtual the past few years. It's going to be a hybrid meeting this year, so there may be an opportunity if there's interest. I will send that around and let some people see that. We likely couldn't cover the whole cost of an Anaheim trip, but we could likely assist with some of that if there is interest. So I'll send it around and let you know. And that's in September.
Just a comment on that, Noah. We used to go to those things way back when. And it wasn't all the planning commissioners, but maybe just new planning commissioners. And I think I went to one in Monterey and it was really informational. It was like a two day conference down there. You know, it was just a lot of information, a lot of great information as the new planning commissioner. So. I don't know. I would forego me going, but I'd I'd love to see somebody who, you know, is new on the planning commissioner. Go to one of those conferences.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. So anyone else have any reports? Any commissioners have any reports? No? Okay. The next item, was there any items received after the agenda was posted?
No items, Chair Lemus.
Okay. Okay. So with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn and we want to thank everybody for being here tonight.
And thank you to the chair for navigating it.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.